I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting on July twenty fifth at six P M. To order unless there's an objection, seeing none, the meeting is called to order. Councilman Price, can you please lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
Thank you. Council, unless there is an objection, I would like to move item number one to this point in the meeting. Seeing no objection, I'm going to do that.
I want to give a special welcome to the family and friends of Kim McGrady. Thank you for joining us tonight. As many of you know, on April eighth, two thousand and twenty one, Kim McGrady rushed into the Gulf to assist people caught in a riptide, ultimately saving several but losing his own life in the rescue effort. Kim's life was dedicated to his family, his friends, his faith, and service to others. His act of heroism came as no surprise to those who knew him best. Kim was a husband, a father, a friend, a neighbor, and a model of excellence. He was a selfless and faithful leader whose volunteer and professional work touched many. The life he lived helped make this world a much better place for all of us. Leanne, Haley, and Colton, your husband and father's legacy is his selflessness, his devotion, his compassion, and now his heroism. The Carnegie Hero Fund awards medals to individuals in the United States and Canada who risk death or serious physical injury to an extraordinary degree, saving or attempting to save the lives of others. In the nearly one hundred and twenty year history of the Carnegie Hero Fund, just ten thousand medals have been awarded. Less than ten percent of all who are nominated each year are selected. I am incredibly honored to present the Carnegie Medal, North America's highest honor for civilian heroism, to Kaylee Colton and Leanne McGrady, in honor of your husband and your father, Kim McGrady. And I believe you're gonna say a few words?
Just a little over a year ago, my dad gave his life in the ocean, saving strangers. It's safe to say a lot has happened in our lives since then. I'm finishing up my last year of college, my mom started her new job in restaurant development at Chick-fil-A, and my brother finished up his first year swimming at the University of Georgia. On top of all that, we all got our first tattoo, which was a surprise to everyone. And we all got John fifteen thirteen in my dad's handwriting. John fifteen thirteen reads, "There is no greater love than to lay down one's life for one's friends." We always add that my dad died for strangers. I want to thank the Carnegie Hero Fund for their dedication to research and for granting this award to my dad. Thanks to them, we get to continue talking about my dad's story and raising awareness for ocean safety. As much as it is an honor to have a hero as a dad, we want to use this visibility of this award to make sure that other people like my dad can continue to live and enjoy life without having to risk it to become a hero. Thank you.
I'm just gonna give everyone just a minute to exit, and then we will resume with the meeting. Okay. It's now time for public comment. I have one card. Tom Simon. If you'll join us here, please state your name, and you'll have three minutes. Please make sure the green light is on the microphone and speak into the microphone, please.
Okay, thank you very much for having me. Maybe the people who just left heard I was gonna talk, I don't know.
They were, they were here to honor Mr. McGrady.
I like to, I want to talk about the multi-use planned path on Tilly Mill. And I know it's not on the agenda, and we'll be talking about it later. But I want to thank a couple of the members who are gonna be meeting with the neighborhoods along Tilly Mill in August. We appreciate that. And we really do appreciate all the work that the city council does. You have no idea, but we do, okay? All right, a couple of things I want to say. Initially, the west side was recommended as the obvious choice for the multi-use path to be put on. Somewhere along the way, it got lost and was assigned, as I understand, to the east side. Michael Smith, the Public Works Director, recommended and said it was the obvious side. With all due respect to Stacy Harris, I understand because I reviewed some of the meeting, meeting, and I listened to a lot of them. And as I understand, she said, why doesn't the council consider the east side? Even though the, the experts recommended the west side. Well, it turns out then somehow, some way, it got to be considered on the east side. Okay, that's number one. Number two, it's gonna cost more, as we know, if we put it on the east side as opposed to west side. There are two sidewalks, one on the east side, one on the west side. A simple solution to it, in my estimation, would be leave the east side as it is. None of the neighborhoods would be destroyed, no construction, no loss of anything, no loss of shrubs, trees, et cetera. It wouldn't reduce the amount of space getting into and out of the neighborhoods. The west side could be a bike path, the east side could be a walker's path. Just extend the existing sidewalk on the west side, two or three feet wider. You've got yourself a bike path, put the designation of bike path on the west side. You've got it for little or virtually no expense. And you'd have your situation resolved. I also want to mention that traffic has been mentioned as a problem. The traffic is a problem only when there's an event at the Marcus J C C. That's a great facility, I'm a member myself. But if they, on certain instances, certain events, all they need to do is have a police officer there, direct traffic into and out of the facility, maybe they're doing it now, then it shouldn't be a problem. We wouldn't have a problem then. And the only problem that, that exists now is that some people, a minority, want to have this multi-use path along.
Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, that was the only card I had. So that concludes, you, did you turn in a card? Who did you give the card to? Okay. All right, come on up and we'll get the card. Thank you. Next. All right, you can come up, you have three minutes.
Members of City Council, thank you for hearing me out today with the card glitch. I'm coming towards you because as you know, I've come towards you a couple of times in the past, kind of advocating for the police department. I think we did have our special meeting last week or the week prior. With that stated, I wanted to first come and approach you, and thank you for kind of taking that seriously. It seems like the city councilman and the, and the city is taking that seriously. With that stated, the reason I'm reapproaching you here today is simply as the iron's hot and I don't think we should take the gas off the pedal just yet. Our neighboring cities are still being quite competitive, and although we've taken a step in the right direction, I don't think we're there just yet. So I still wanted to kind of come to you, kind of present a little bit of what's important to us, you know, two minutes and fifty-eight seconds at a time, to kind of continuously kind of press on this iron, which is we've done one thing for our police department, but the last thing we need to do is just kind of switch gears, go to something else. Again, the neighboring cities are still pretty competitive when it comes to pay, when it comes to support. I think we should still stand on that, we should still kind of move forward in that. As I've mentioned before, I think the most important thing here is to stay proactive. I think it's important to attract, retain, support good police officers for the Dunwoody Police Department. So when they continue kind of pushing onto that iron, continuously pressing onto that one. I've also noticed in the agenda today, Major Fladrick is gonna come and talk about specialized unit pay and then specialized things for firearms. Again, I can't speak on behalf of every citizen in the city, but I think that's something important to us. Something like that, something simple as that could really go a long way in helping the city when it's policing. I'd like to encourage that. In addition to that, my last thing in staying proactive with this is I would actually like to encourage the city council members, if possible, to maybe consider doing a ride-along. I think that's the best way of kind of learning a little bit of what the police department needs, maybe the struggles going on in different ways of kind of staying proactive and kind of encouraging that. So I'll continue coming on until we do our agenda for the, or our budget for the twenty twenty-three budget, to kind of continue pushing this agenda item. That stated, though, I did want to thank you for the time you spent in this, the consideration, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you. So that concludes public comment. We will have another section of public comment at the end of the meeting. Next up, we've already done number one, Councilman Hinnigan, please. Oh, wait, wait, sorry. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Harris has a point of information.
I would just like to clarify a few things that have been said and that are out there. I don't know why I'm ringing. It's not muted. It is muted, okay. Okay, I'll just go away from it a little bit. This is to not only speak to the gentleman who just spoke on public comment, but we also received an email this past week regarding the plans for multi-use trail and Tilly Mill from Ms. Joan Goldman. Both the speaker and the writers said that it stated that was their understanding that the path has moved to the east side of the road at my request. That statement could not be further from the truth. I do work for the MJCCA, which is also located on Tilly Mill Road. Because of my employment status, I recused myself from any discussion about the path design and subsequent consensus discussion by council. I also made it a point to not have any conversation with any council members about the Tilly Mill path prior to the discussion at the June thirteenth council meeting. Frankly, I'm angry somebody would call to question my integrity in this matter. I understood early on that I would be recusing myself from any discussion and vote. To say otherwise is an outright lie. As long as I employed by the MJCCA, I will not voice any opinion on a proposed path in Tilly Mill. I do encourage citizens to sign up for our D newsletter so they may be incorrectly informed about the business in the city. And in fact, the staff recommendation was for the east side of Tilly Mill, which you can see in the agenda for the June thirteenth, June thirteenth meeting, which is available publicly at our website and was published prior to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Councilman Hinnigan. Okay, one second, though. So whoever's in the mirrored room, Michael. Our audio is a little wonky. Thank you. I don't know if y'all can fix it from back there. All right, so Councilman Hinnigan, let's see if it works for you.
Good evening, yes. Next on the agenda for myself, I'm slated to talk about the report of the Capitol Committee. Our Capitol Committee met on July fifteenth. It was myself, Councilmember Seconder and Lawton Barker. And we discussed a, a list of items that were proposed or discussed for a possible bond referendum. At the prior council meeting, there was a longer list that was discussed openly by council, and the staff then pared back some of it for us to discuss. There was never really a vote of that, that list. So at the time of the committee meeting, since Councilman Seconder and myself missed that meeting, we went through the seventeen items that were on the previous list, going through each item to see if it made any sense to have a bond referendum and how much that bond referendum for B and for what amount. And there was some great discussion on all seventeen items. It was determined pretty quickly, based on the discussions of the council members on the committee, that there would probably be no bond referendum. Each of us looked at it and kind of said that there's really no reason to have a bond referendum at this time for the items that were on the list. If for reasons for each item, there was just no reason for the bond referendum this year. But that being said, our discussions then turned quickly into what we would have to be done for each item if we were to go for a bond referendum in the future in two thousand and twenty-three. We discussed not only the items themselves, but the ongoing expenses that each capital improvement may cost. For example, if there was a road transportation improvement, there really isn't much ongoing cost. If there's a park improvement, you gotta cut that new grass, you gotta maintain those parks to a level, and that costs money. And those were the discussions that we had. Staff gave us a number of documents about moving forward with the bond record, bond referendum, asking for recommendations, whether we wanted a twenty-year bond, a thirty-year bond, you know, the various aspects of amounts. And again, council on the committee made a quick motion that we were not gonna go forward with a recommendation to the full council for a bond referendum based on the list and the needs that we had in front of us. And so today, I'm letting you know that there was a, there was a quick vote. It was a two-to-one vote that there should be no forwarding lists, the full council for a bond referendum moving forward in two thousand and twenty-two. I'm happy to let the other council members that were also on the committee speak if there's something that I misspoke or if they'd like to update me on anything else.
All right, so for the rest of council that was not at, I'm sorry. For the rest of council that was not at the meeting, does anyone have questions for staff or myself or John or the committee?
I have some questions, and let me start by saying I don't disagree with where we are today. I do believe that more time is needed to fully vet all of the projects on that list. However, since it is my hope that we'll be moving forward, I want to make sure that our, our procedure for doing that is, is, is clear. And so I almost hesitate to say this because I don't want it to sound critical, but the the committee was, was tasked with presenting a list. It wasn't a bond recommendation committee. And I'm a little disappointed that the recommendation was not to move forward with a bond because that was not the mandate of the group. By default, by failing to complete the mandate and provide a list, you in essence usurp that decision from the rest of mayor and council. Now again, I think that's the decision we would have arrived at. But moving forward, I want to make sure that any committees we have tasked with, with these types of projects are clear on, on the scope of what their responsibilities are, so that we're not, I guess, making decisions you weren't tasked to make. Again, so all that said, I agree with that, that we, we have some more work to do. And I just want to make some general comments on the, on, on the, the bond referendum moving forward, the possibility of it. As I said, it's my sincere hope that we continue to move forward on this. I, I do believe there is a lot of support in the community for this. I think we have heard certainly some people with concerns, some people that are outright against it, and I don't think anything we put before them would change their mind otherwise. But I have had, in my estimation, four more people come to me and ask that we please move forward with this. So and I think the one thing in all the negative comments that I've heard is, is that people saying that this was the city council approving a bond, and that's not the case. And I want to make crystal clear that the council is not making a decision as to whether we issue a bond. The council is making a decision to put a referendum on a ballot that in essence, the residents will make that decision. And quite frankly, I don't, can't think of anything more democratic than putting it out to the residents and letting them decide for themselves. Now, we have some, some more work to do to get ready for that so that the citizens can make an informed decision. But, you know, to suggest that the council has done, was trying to, to you know, pu- pu- push this through is not an accurate statement. We were going to give the residents the opportunity to decide for themselves. And, and ultimately, they will have the final word. It's not the city council deciding this, it's the residents. And, and you know, we've heard from negative people, but as I said, in my estimation, there are far more people that would like us to move forward with this. And, and so we, we let, we let the residents of the city decide this. So it's my hope that we'll push forward with this. I'm gonna use a little bit of a, and bear with me. Little bit of a, you know, when, when I was younger and about a hundred pounds less, I was, I was a big runner when I was a teenager. And I actually had a cross-country coach. I grew up in, in New York in the Hudson Valley. There's no such thing as running without running up a lot of hills. There's hills everywhere. And to this day, I had a coach when I was very young teach me about when you're running up a hill, there's a, there's a tendency as you're approaching, approaching the crest of that hill, to slow down. Because you start to relax, like, all right, I'm almost at the top of the hill, I'm almost at the top hill, and you tend to slow down. Okay, and the coach said, no, you can't do that. You've got to keep your momentum, you've got to push through that crest of the hill. You got to keep running fast, you can't slow down. We've been, we've been running uphill the past couple of months, trying to get this bond referendum ready for the public to make a decision. This, this pause is kind of that crest in the hill. I'm gonna plead, make a plea to my fellow council members here and to staff and everyone involved that we don't let up, that we continue to push through the crest of this hill because we've got another hill right beyond that crest. And it's, it's my, I'm gonna make a recommendation because it's kind of easy to kind of take a deep breath and say, okay, well, we're not doing it this year, we'll deal with this next year. And then next April or May, we're kind of in the same spot we found ourselves this year. I'm gonna recommend that we continue to push forward, we run through the crest of this hill. And I would like to request that we have this put together by the council retreat in February or March. Fully vetted, fully ready to go, and there might be some i's to dot and some t's to cross, but that, so that we can have a full deliberation on this topic. And then we have several months to then go out with a fully put-together package to the public to, to get some additional public, public input and education there, rather than trying to put it together as we're, we're putting it out there. I understand the need to, to give the public all of the information they need, but I, I find ourselves in a, we, this is something that we need to decide. I find myself in a chicken or egg situation where we can't move forward with plans because we don't have the funding, but we can't move forward with funding because we don't have the plans. And eventually, we're gonna have to get to a point of mutual trust. And I think, you know, people point to the original bond referendum that the city did several years ago. We're a completely different city. We have successful projects that we've completed that hopefully will build the trust with the community. And by the way, I'm speaking primarily of of Brook Run, which was done with bond money from the county, not, not a bond issued by the city. It would not have been possible without that bond money. We're not gonna be able to do these projects. You know, we've, two years ago in two thousand and twenty, we began to process a public input for Austin and Vermac Parks. We had public input, we put together a plan, we had more public input, we had a town hall, we had a lot of community feedback on that. And then it was like, okay, we've got a plan, let's put it on the shelf because we don't have the money to do it. Do those plans need a little bit of tweaking? Yes. Are they pretty close to, to ready? I believe yes. So at, at some point, we need to make a decision. And there's got to be a trust with the public with us, and then we have to trust the, the public to make the right decision based on the information we give them. So so it's my hope that we will continue to work on this, that we will finalize a list of, of true needs for the city. That's an investment in the future. And again, I like to view this as, as an investment and not expense. I think there's, it's not just semantics, I think it's a difference in mindset. And it is my hope that we'll continue to move forward on this. And as I said, I, I, I hope that we are ready, we have this all put together by our retreat so that we have several months to vet out the little smaller details that the public needs and get, and get full education to the public so they've got plenty of sufficient time to ask us questions and educate themselves so that the public can make an informed decision. And I rambled longer than I planned to, and I apologize. But I do think this is an important issue for the future of our city. And I think it's important that we let the residents decide. And, and to me, that's the most important thing is we are giving this to the residents to make a decision as what they want the future of Dunwoody to be. So thank you for obliging me, talking a little longer than I planned.
Thank you. Oh, I think maybe they fixed it. Thank you very much. And our, my intention is to bring back a lot more information in the next month, the six weeks, for next two or three, two or three meetings from now about next steps. So, oh, Rob, go ahead.
Tom already said a lot, so I'm not gonna repeat everything he said. I'll just reiterate that I, I hope we can come up with a clear schedule with milestones, so this will keep moving forward, that we can hone our project list and, you know, really use this as an opportunity to get some public feedback on the kinds of things that, that they want. And I would like to see, we, we talked in the last meeting about trying to move forward with just the parks component. I would like to see trails included in this, as well as some pedestrian and bike safety components. I, I think that would all help with, with the kind of increasing recreation so people can move about the city better. And then just, I am in favor of putting something before the citizens for consideration next fall. I'd like to just see us move to do that. Thank you all.
Catherine?
Stacy? I kind of thank you, Tom and Rob, you more eloquently than I can do is express some opinions, but I just really want to reiterate what Tom said. Like, I honestly thought that the goal of the Capitol Committee was to come back to us, and we were gonna look at this meeting and decide as a council whether or not to do a bond. And you all, that's not what happened, that's not what we're talking about tonight. And so I kind of feel like my voice wasn't heard either. And I also, I was confused, I actually called Congresswoman, or Council, not Congresswoman, I just gave you a promotion.
A promotion, congratulations.
Councilwoman Lawton Barker, and I said, I'm very confused because this Capitol Projects list is labeled new project list, and it's the exact same one that we talked about at the June thirteenth, at the July eleventh meeting. So I, I was very confused as to what you all talked about, and then how a decision was made, not on Capitol Projects, but the fact that we weren't gonna do a bond where it wasn't, you know, even a quorum. So I hope that I, like Tom said, we need to keep moving forward. Like, we have a sign that says future future park in Dunwoody, and I just, I, I don't want to wait ten years for that future to become realized. I think we all realize, we all understand that, that we have work to do, and I know that we're all willing to do it, but I think we all need to get on the same page a little bit more with milestones and, and what needs to be accomplished.
Joe?
So I've got a new analogy of being on city council. It's like being in an arranged marriage with six other people. So, you know, we all have to kind of communicate, we got to get along, right? It's, you know, you have, have, have counseling when you're in marriage, so it's like, okay, let's make sure you communicate. So I think having that plan is gonna help. I also think perfection is the enemy of good as well, so we have to have that definition of done, the specificity. Okay, so I, I would, I hope that the first thing we say is, regardless of the scope, let's show what level of specificity, specificity do you need for these line items, okay? As well, and trails, definitely. I appreciate that, public, hopefully you know that we're going to be tentatively engaging and pre- preparing a new citywide parks, trails master plan, bringing in the PATH Foundation. That's gonna provide a great reset as well to bring in everybody from the table, talk about trails and usage. So everybody from the city will have a nice holistic citywide plan that'll reference there, and you say, everybody will know what, what the streetscape looks like, what does it look like at the profile setting, all that design along those things, so there's no, no variance on there as well. So I appreciate. No variance on there as well, so I appreciate that as well, so. Um, look, I'm I'm, I realize, you know, we are, we're not term limited here on council, but um, in my current term. I've I've counted them, there's thirty-one more meetings that I will have, regular scheduled meetings, there's thirty-one more meetings that I'll have on my current term, seventeen months. So you know what, if it takes till the second, I'm I'm in my third month before the end of my term, and when this comes to fruition, so be it. Cause twenty twenty was a do-over, right, but we're moving forward, the glass is half-full. Um, yes, I wish we could have done a few things differently between May and July to get that list down. And to get that specificity, uh, but here we are, so we're opening up the transparent process. Re-engaging, it's great, we're gonna update our parks plan, we're gonna have a good trail plan, and and we're getting good things regardless, thank you.
John, anything else?
Sure, I'll just wait, and I appreciate the uh, comments of council, and if I uh, as the chairman of that committee didn't fulfill your wishes and dreams, I apologize. I did watch the meeting of, I guess it was the thirteenth, quite extensively. And uh, there was no votes taken on any of the discussion going through that list, there was no formal motions, it was all open discussion. So when it came back to us, to me, I was going back to the original list, because there was no motion, there was nothing taken off under formal action. And there's nothing stopping us today from putting, it's not a special call meeting, if you'd like to add something to the agenda to. Rediscuss or the, I'm not taking away the will of council, you have the ability, if you'd like to make a motion to update, to add an item. And to propose changes that you would like, feel free to, that's the ability that you have sitting at this dais. I was given a bunch of documents at that meeting regarding bond referendums and 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 asking for recommendations in that packet. And I wasn't comfortable with that, and based on. Uh, timeout on the trails that they needed more work, and there's gonna be more input. And the parks plans that were not finalized and questions regarding. Roberts and girl softball and just a numerous things, I just saw it as we weren't ready. And I just saw it, we weren't ready, but if it's the will of council, please, you have the ability to make a motion to put forward ideas. If the will of council, if there's four, if there's a a majority of us, please move forward, I personally didn't see it as such, and I thought I was being uh. You know, doing well for the task that I was asked, so I wasn't trying to overstate or take control of any way, shape or form. Please feel free to, uh, if that's the case, I if if there's a, if that's your feeling, I apologize, but that was not my intention. And uh, again, the will of council is still open today to do with as you please, so thank you.
So I apologize for the confusion, and we're gonna better define the process moving forward. This is, you know, my feeling has been particularly the last six weeks that we were rushing. That we weren't quite ready, that there's too many questions, or we were gonna have to have a very narrow offering. Which might not best meet the city needs for the next ten years, so I um, am comfortable with a brief pause. Let's come back to you with a process and a plan, and certainly for more public input. Um, and we will go from there, if everyone's okay, if anyone wants to put something on the agenda, as John said, you can just let me know. Um, otherwise, we will continue on tonight, and we will come back either the last meeting in August or the first meeting in September with a specific plan. Alright, thank you, good discussion. Consent agenda, does anybody have anything they want to take off the agenda? Or does anyone have any questions about something on the consent agenda?
Move to approve?
Second.
Move by Stacy, second by.
Joe.
Joe, um. Major Fladrich, I hate to put you on the spot, and you may not know the answer. Sorry. No, it's the number seven. And consent, number seven. And it, um, when you trade in, like, the replacement firearms, what happens to those? Do you know, like, when you, so we're on, we're getting the purchase of the replacement. Um, we're replacing your, the department's firearms, and we get like a credit. Do they repurpose them, do you know what they do with them?
They resell, basically what happens is Glock sells it to a. Uh, local vendor that they deal with, and most, most of the cops buy their own gun.
Okay.
Um, and that's typically how they recoup their money, because they're giving us a substantial break.
Gotcha, oh, right, because each officer is allowed to buy their own.
That's correct.
Weapon that we're retiring.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, alright, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously. Next up, Mr. Vanicki, and I think Sharon, do you have to read this one?
Item number eight, under business items, is approval of qualified agencies for American Rescue Plan funding, Jay Vanicki.
Uh, Mayor and Council, what you have before you is the first list of probably what will be two or three iterations. Of approval of direct assistant grant recipients using American Rescue Plan funding. To give a little bit of background on the process, we put in RFQ, a request for qualifications on the street, instead of an outright grant application. We're treating it, and I don't mean this in in a um, any type of bad way, but much the same way we do with vendors who do electrical work here. We're looking for qualified not-for-profits or similar agencies who can do the work of the city that we would do through ARP. If we had staff to do it. We uh, received sixteen different applications, and when the committee of staff members went through to kind of look through them the first time. We realized that twelve of them we could bring back instantly, and that's what you see before you hear. There are group, two different groups, one of them are people who received previous CARES funding, they've already been vetted by the city, they've already been approved. So that's six of the members, out of the rest, they either have current facility usage agreement with us. Or in the case of the uh, uh, garden club within Brook Run, they operate solely on our premises. So we feel we could bring both of those to you, this is only an approval by the council for staff to engage with them. On potential funding, it does not promise funding, Dorton, does it, does it give them the whole entire one point eight million that's left there? We will work with them individually and bring those contracts back to you at a later date, but what this does is authorize us to work with them to draft proposed contracts. In much the same way we did with Corners outreach in the summer school program this year, this point, I'll take any questions.
So I just want to clarify for people listening, there are also age, we're we're going to, first of all, there were agencies that applied. That had not been partnering with us, and you may still bring them to us.
That is.
Once they're fully vetted. The second thing is, is you're gonna re-release a call, a request for qualifications tomorrow. Um, because we want more applicants, so, or we, we have some that maybe missed the deadline. Um, and they provide services that we're actually using currently, or our residents are actually using currently, anybody have any other questions? Go ahead, Rob.
I, could you just clarify how you reached out to the um, or how you spread word about this RFQ?
Every single way under the sun, basically, the day it was done, we sent it to all the not-for-profits we've engaged with. It's actually posted through our procurement on the website, and then we have a few other. Uh, staff members who live in Dunwoody or active in the community who personally passed it out to the others.
Yeah, the the reason I ask is I just would have expected that Community Assistance Center, for example, might have made it onto the list.
Us too.
Yes, and and I talked to them this morning, so they they're, again, fully aware.
Okay, thank you.
I think that summertime things get lost, maybe, because uh, Corners missed it too, so. Go ahead.
Um, I. How did we decide that we need to include like the Dunwoody Community Garden, Dunwoody Senior Baseball, like, because they certainly aren't in that. World of non, I mean, they're they are nonprofit, but not, they're not in that. World of direct assistant, which this is for, so it's fine, I mean, we have a partnership for for them, I'm just a little confused as to why we decided to give them and. Like, in- include them, and and what, did they reach out to you, and can you just kind of enlighten me?
Uh, we worked with them, and part of it was the model we used with Corners on the voucher program. Because in much the same way, we know that the Corners people who are applying are going to be those in need, so we understood that, so we gave a voucher part. And part of us asking our partners to work with it, there are parts of the community which are underserved, who would not be able to participate in a baseball program. So in developing things like this, we could be working with them to waive fees for certain income levels, so it would increase participation. From those who would not have a chance to participate in these type of programs, and that's the type of contracts we look to working with them on.
And I'm assuming that. All the financials and all the information that that is required, we're requiring of our partners as well.
There there is, with the one exception that's causing somewhat, and it's uh, having an audit for the size as small as they are. Since we already have, and that's why we limited it, those, we already have facility usage agreement, in other words, we're already entwined financially with them. It's not as if it's a an entity that we've not worked for before, the auditing requirements that we've had for our not-for-profits. Which we still want to hold firm on that, we are in some cases, if we already have an established relationship, are willing to make sure that we are. I'm not gonna say overlooked, but we aren't gonna require you to spend seven thousand dollars for an audit that will only get you a grant of ten thousand dollars.
And and if it's okay, I'll clarify a little bit, so some organizations may already have a program that targets those in need. Um, and some organizations that we may have approved may never get a cent from us.
That is correct.
Because they have to come forward with uh, programs that meet the objectives, and so.
And and that's our goal on our partners.
Yes.
And we we uh, do not plan to bring anything before council that would just be essentially a direct grant off of, it's got to have an assistance and a say. Of finding and addressing a core need, and we also, in some cases, I've told every person that applied that just because you're on this list does not guarantee we will.
It was in the literature, anybody else? Go ahead.
One more follow-up, you mentioned there's gonna be a second push for RFQs, is that, I'm guessing to capture. Some of the people we know that do a lot of work to make sure, because that's just my observation. At this point, I just want to make sure we have as big a list as possible, you know, even if half of them never have a project that comes forward, just. The, to me, the more ideas, the better.
It goes out tomorrow.
Which which is the, on my uh, thing to do between eight and eight fifteen tomorrow.
Right. Anybody else, alright, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by Joe.
Well, second.
Second by, was it you, Rob, Rob, any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Item number nine is authorized specialized unit pay for police department, Major Fladrick.
So essentially, this program is to. Give us an opportunity to recognize the hard work that's being put in. Uh, by the folks that are assigned to these specialized units, um, a lot of times they'll be. In a situation where they have to work outside of their existing uh, work hours, things like that, the um. Other attractant would be to have more officers apply for a specialized unit assignment, which is very important. And so we're basically asking the council for a four thousand dollar. It's essentially a bonus to the existing pay, uh, that will only stay with an officer during that particular assignment.
Okay, does anyone have, we we had questions about SWAT last time, did any, do.
I'll be glad to answer.
Yes, please.
So SWAT currently has a twenty-five-hundred-dollar uh, additional stipend. Again, this is a part-time assignment uh, for for our officers. Um, other agencies have a slightly higher uh, stipend that they that they issue. This particular four thousand dollar block um, will not um. Affect anybody that is of rank, so this will be on the officer level, and it won't be a uh. Essentially, a mix of assignments and payments.
So it sounds like in in the recommendation from staff, the twenty-five-hundred stayed the same, is that correct? Jay.
Yes.
And so I think council maybe wants us to take a look at that, but you can bring it forth at another time, and we can move forward with this today if it's the will of the council. Alright, anybody have any, go ahead, Joe.
So they're uh, just gonna be paid out equally throughout the year, is that for their per pay period?
Yes, so the plan is to put it uh, into the pay period paychecks. Over that twelve, twelve-month program, or, you know, again, their tenure, really, when you think about it, okay.
Anybody else? To Tom.
Just, and and I know the mayor mentioned that we're gonna talk about the SWAT piece in the future, but just to ask a question, so i- is is the uh. I guess the thinking rationale that the SWAT assignment is a part-time assignment versus the 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 four thousand is going to full-time responsibilities?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and and just, um, again, in the in the memo, you also mentioned, um. Two of the other agencies that uh, we cooperate with North Metro SWAT, I believe Sandy Springs and Brookhaven are at thirty-five-hundred as opposed to twenty-five-hundred. I presume those officers from those departments have similar or the same responsibilities that the Dunwoody officers do.
Yes, sir, they do.
Okay, I again, just because someone else is doing it, doesn't mean that we have to do it, how many SWAT officers do we have?
We have seven slots assigned to North Metro SWAT.
Okay, so if if we were to to, let me ask you this, would. Because that's a part-time position and these others are full-time, would there be any sort of compression issue as far as we're. If we, if we decided to bump SWAT up to, let's say, thirty-five-hundred to be consistent with the other two agencies, um. Are we, have we given them more? Then, is it, is it watering down, I guess, the intent of what we started with on this?
Uh, we're certainly always, you know, happy to have our officers make more money, um, that's obviously another discussion.
Yeah, let let us get back to you on that one, I know the issue you're trying to get at, and when we come back to you, we'll we'll fully address the SWAT issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else, this is an action item.
Move to approve?
Move by Stacy.
Second.
Second by Joe, any further discussion, seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, we're on to discussion items, Michael, is it you or Todd Meadows? I can see that he's here, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. I'm here tonight to talk about the Dunwoody Road sidewalk projects, uh, we're seeking authorization to move forward with a. Construction contract with Soul Construction in the amount of five hundred forty-nine thousand one eleven. Um, this project is going to involve the uh, connection of sidewalks in Oak Point subdivision. Through a segment of Shambly Dunwoody Road at the corner of Shambly Dunwoody and Dunwoody Road. And then up Dunwoody Road to the city limit line. Uh, we'll also be adding some retaining walls due to the grade, grade changes there, and also will be um. Resurfacing a portion of Shambly Dunwoody, I'm sorry, Spalding Drive, uh, as a part of the recently completed projects on Spalding Drive. In addition, we've also made provisions for an ad alternates, uh, should City of Sandy Springs elect. To uh, mill and resurface their portion of Dunwoody Road, uh, since we've uh, we've previously um. Uh, paved Dun- that segment, and uh, if we just make make it a nicer, more complete project. Uh, so we're in correspondence with them, in the event they do decide, we would be um, executing an intergovernment agreement with them. Uh, and um, performing that work simultaneous with our improvements. Uh, funds are available uh, in the um, post-capital paving um, and SPOSS, so. Uh, we are short, though, we are asking for, may may need an additional hundred thousand dollars, we are requesting. Or that uh, forty-two thousand five hundred of that be from unallocated SPOSS funds. To cover the construction management and testing, and then we may need an additional uh, fifty-seven thousand five hundred. If needed for construction contingency. At this point, um, that's a summary of the project, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Alright, questions, starting with Tom.
Uh, yeah, thank you, um, so when this first came back uh, to us as a concept, whenever, uh, while back, I was, I think it was a while, while ago. Um, I raised a question as far as, I I know there was a a note on there about the City of Sandy Springs. Uh, having the option for the for the paving portion, uh, have they given any response, or did we even ask the question about the sidewalk portion? Because what this is gonna do is we're gonna have a sidewalk that pretty much ends in the middle of nowhere, uh, about roughly a quarter mile, I might be off on my, but it's not that far to get us to Spalding. Um, to me, and and again, it's it's rare to hear me talk negatively about a sidewalk project, but there there, there are no homes. On on Dunwoody, it it's backyards with privacy fences, so this sidewalk is not gonna have access to any Dunwoody homes. And if it just kind of deadends at the city line, it's kind of a path to nowhere, um, I think it has value if Sandy Springs is willing to. Connect the dots, if you will, and take it all the way to Spalding, but without that connection, I personally, I see very little value in this segment of sidewalk. So is is Sandy Springs giving us any indication?
We have, we have discussed with them, the possibility of them extending it, they are actually in the process of. We have, we have discussed with them the possibility of them extending it. They are actually in the process of extending the section on Spalding that we've, that we've recently completed and will be doing so up to the Dunwoody Road intersection on Spalding. Likewise, they indicated they would be interested at some point in connecting this, this segment to the sidewalks that are on Spalding Drive. We don't have any commitments, but that they did express an interest in doing so.
So did we have any idea of a timeline they would have on that, or?
I, I don't, we are meeting tomorrow on the project that will be getting started on Spalding later this summer, in the next month or so. So I can ask their.
Yeah, just before we vote on this, I would, I would, I would personally prefer to have a firmer understanding of what Sandy Springs intentions are. Because like I said, if, if, if they have, if they're not planning to put that sidewalk in, to me, this sidewalk has very little value. And that's, like I said, it's a rare thing for me to say, but there's just nobody that this services without that connection to Spalding, in my opinion, and I might be wrong.
Once, I, I can have a conversation with Mayor Paul and try to get a sense of their priorities as well. Okay, anybody have other questions? Catherine?
I'll bring up a point that I was asked specifically about a sidewalk on this road. If you were coming up to, if you were going to walk to Marta, you're going to get there this way. So it was asked specifically of me to get.
But walking from where?
From the branches, from Redfield, I guess.
To the north, to the sandy sprint, to the, to Spalding, up to the Marta station.
Yep, then down to Peachtree Dunwoody.
Well, again, I mean, in the Dunwoody portion, it'd be great, but then once you hit the Sandy Springs border, you're, you're walking on the street, and so.
I, I'm adding those two cents.
Anybody else? Joe?
Hey, Todd, thank you. I'm not going to put you on the spot to try to share your screen and go to the website, but for the greater public that are here, this is a SPOSS-funded capital project. If you go to the Dunwoody City GA website, the main website under projects, it's people talking about, you know, all of a sudden I just heard of something. This is following the same process as all of our other capital improvement projects that we do in the public right away. So if you go to the city's website here and you go into projects and you'll see a nice little timeline, concept, preliminary design, final design, says right away acquisition. You know, it shows that we're moving on further and now we're getting to, you know, you can go back in history and see when we first discussed this. And then there was an RFP and all these other things. So this is how the workflow works here, and now it's coming back up to council. So this is not a morgue statement, Todd, but just let people know, this is here, it's transparent. You can see when we talked last time and what we discussed and find out where we are. And as further the supporting document shows where the funding sources are coming from, this is that penny sales tax, right? The SPOSS funding that we use to pave the roads, to build the Womack-Shambly-Dunwoody intersection, to build the Shambly-Dunwoody-Spalding intersection, and so on. So it's coming from basically the same bucket of money, right, Todd? Yeah. Did I say anything incorrect there, Todd, of what you kind of, I just paraphrased the process?
That's inaccurate.
Perfect, okay. That was all. I just, again, thank you for your work.
Stacy.
So I know that I've learned to have a lot of patience when it comes to public works projects. So I just want to know how much patience I have to have. It says the project is expected to be completed in 2023, but I couldn't quite get, is that the relocation of the utilities or is that the whole thing?
The whole, the whole thing.
Okay.
We think it'll, it'll take about six months from the time we break ground until the work will be completed. It's a fairly simple project. There are, we do have a gas main that needs to be relocated and, and a storm crossing at the creek that may be a little complicated.
Go ahead.
And I know we have other conversations we're going to have at Sandy Springs, so you know, there's a lot of the list, because we're going to look at the Jeff Ferry corridor and everything else. So you know, obviously, when they're coming to the table, what, how was it, 300 feet we needed more from them? How many, how many more feet they need to build?
Well, there's a, there's a residence stairs. You come around the corner before the city limit line. Maybe three or 400 feet, yeah, maybe.
Right, so with their big $100 million budget, anyway, yeah. That'd be great if you could come back, at least as some kind of intent of forecast and put that in their pipeline for funding. It'd be great too, next time. And I guess my reason for asking this now is since we're already putting in the portion of asphalt option for Sandy Springs, if they would have interest in putting in the option of us just doing the sidewalk as well and getting it all done at once. So that, that was, that was really the end game for me.
Okay, I just have a question that I often ask. So when I look at the bid sheet, first of all, have we done business with this contractor?
We have not worked with Seoul before. However, we, some of my colleagues at Brookhaven and other municipalities have, have, and we vetted their references in addition to some other projects they've worked on that we had contacts with. And they, they come out as being a reputable firm and with the proper qualifications.
So I'm really concerned about the bid amount. It's, I'm just trying to do the math. I think it's 20% less than the nearest competitor and as much as half as much as the top bidder. And I just want to make sure we don't get ourselves in a position in this economy particularly. So I don't know, I mean, I know in Georgia in public works, we take the lowest bids and that's the way it is, but I just want to put on the record that this makes me a little nervous. So with that, I think we have some questions to answer and we will, Michael and y'all will figure out when to bring it back. So thank you. Mr. Playdome, do you need Major Fladrick? He walked out, but, oh no, he's still here. Okay, sorry. I can't see behind the pole and you were there and now you're not. Sorry.
We will need him, yes.
I'm just going to tell someone to go get him. Thank you.
I am here to first present the possibility of a contract award for consulting services for the study of the police department.
Wait, what's wrong? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Let's see, this was, we issued requests for proposals in April of 2020. We received four responses. We had a committee of four evaluate the responses and narrowed it down to three. From there, we, the committee interviewed the three highest scoring firms on June 30th. And based on that interview process, we are proposing a contract to Barry Dunn. They have said it will be approximately an eight-month project at a cost of $117,500. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
This was a task we defined at our retreat. Does anybody have any questions? I'm just thrilled. We're moving right along on that retreat list, so, go ahead, Joe.
Hey, thanks. I've got a, I got a some, some technical questions. So are they, are they online? Are they going to be here for questions here for the, tonight, or?
Not tonight. They are not online currently, I do not believe.
Are they? All right, so just PSFY, and it doesn't give me any additional credibility. When I was enlisted, I was a military police. But I am looking at the interaction. They're going to be interacting with the council at all. Some of, sometimes we come in planning, they have interviews and so on. Will they be interviewing us individually?
I have to go back and flip through the proposal to make sure I'm stating this correctly. I believe that they had an extensive list of departments, not just within police, but HR, city management. I need to verify if council or not is included in that, but I do know that they had an extensive list of, and the people they wanted to talk to outside of the police department.
I don't see that.
E- e- even if it's even if it's not on there, it will be incorporated in the final work product.
Okay, where are the other bidder results? Is that in the packet?
I might have. I can make sure you get that.
Okay. Are we going to be reaching out to the Latina, Latino population specifically? I know we have, I, I looked at the resumes. It's, it's good to see the backgrounds. I see you've got folks, the subject matter experts, Gloria Reyes, Fred Fletcher, Mike personally there. Will they be reaching out to non-native English-speaking people in the community?
Again, we will make that recommendation. Once we get the contract awarded, I know they want to come in and have what amounts to a project kickoff where we set more scope and timeframe and stuff like that. So we will definitely make that recommendation, absolutely.
Well, I, so I work for Accenture in my day job. I, I, I go by what's in the signed statement of work before we work.
Let me, again, with the detail that we're getting into on that, I can guarantee you that a broad brush will be put for getting input within the community. I can guarantee that.
So potentially, because the RFP was generated without having council feedback, I know we made a comment at the council retreat, but I wanted to hear about how we were going to engage and execute that. Are they going to be on site or are they going to be remote? Because I see some people are based in Wisconsin and Texas and other parts of the state.
There will, there will be some portion, they will not be the whole time, but there will be some portion where they do onsite interviews, yes.
They will be on site for some portion of it. Inside, it mentions the city project team members. Do we know who those members are?
At the current time, we don't have that lineup, but it'll be some of police and some of management.
Okay, all right. And then they'll produce a final report. Will that come to them, the council with the action items, with potential action items and so on?
Yes.
Okay, so just taking high level, I really appreciate that we do this, right? I look at this as being, we have master plans for parks, for all these other things, comprehensive land use, and this is really critical, public safety. And we've been a city for how many years now? So it's super important that we do this. I'm really appreciative of this. And I read, read the scope of work and so on, the staffing, schedules, operations. I, I want to hear about, you know, how do we need to best train people? How do we keep them trained, you know, by specific activity, their training location? I also want to ensure for public that we have accountability. How, how does that work aside from the traditional, okay, we go through the city manager and it's opaque? But what can we do that other cities do, right, for the transparency, accountability and so on when they're deployed out there? So again, I appreciate this and I look forward to being a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will see this item whenever you're ready to bring it to us, I guess, in two weeks. And also, the bid sheets and stuff should be in there, please.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Thank you. You're here again.
I am. So this one is for the disposal of seized property. So the police department, the police department received a court order to dispose of 73 seized firearms by sale or destruction. They received that court order in April of 2021. They found the owners of seven of the firearms, but requesting sale or destruction of the remaining firearms based on a Georgia code.
So, questions, comments, anybody?
Sale, well.
So can we just destroy them? Is it required that we sell them?
The court order said we can sell or destroy.
Okay, so I don't know what's appropriate from our role. If you sell them, how do you sell them?
We go through a bidding process.
And then like, anybody can buy them that's legally allowed to buy them?
So I have not gone through that process before and I don't know if.
Okay, so I'd, I'd like to, oh, go ahead, Major Fladrick.
There are different venues. Exactly how it's been done here before, I frankly don't remember right now off the top of my head.
Okay, so I'm not ready to vote on this and I'd like more information. I don't know if I'm speaking for all the council, but my preference, I'm one vote, is to destroy these. I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't, given some of the challenges we're facing in the world right now, why we have to make cheap guns available, because I would assume they'd sell at a discount. So Jay, our request is to come back with a lot more information, please.
We will come back to you at a later meeting with more detail.
Because I would assume you can sell for scrap metal, which has some value. And I, yes, please come back with more information. Thank you. Next.
And last one is the disposal and transfer of obsolete rifle plates and armored helmets. So the request is declare 70 expired security pro rifle plates and 36 armored helmets surplus and to dispose of them because they do not meet the National Institute of Justice, Justice, Justice Ballistic Standards anymore. We inquired if we could trade them in or resell them in equipment so old that that's not an option. So we did have a transfer request, and I hope I say the city's name right, DeFunniac Springs has a transfer request that's included in your package to send these to them as is. We would also have a indemnification letter that they would sign noting that they received them as is. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Consent? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment? We have two. First, does council have anything else? Oh no, I'm going to call. I'll call. I'm sorry, I just, does council have anything else? Okay, before council comments. All right, Tom Simon, sorry. You'll have three minutes. Just introduce yourself.
Tom Simon Stevens Walk neighborhood. I'd like to address my comments previously. And with all due respect, Stacy Harris' comment, no impunity of anyone's integrity was taken place. All I stated was the facts and my integrity was impugned in my estimation. Just to set the record straight, I listened to a number of the council meetings, the videos, I watched the videos. And on one of the videos at the two hour and 56 minute, I heard the recommendation of the public works director recommend the west side for the, the Tilly Mill project path be put on the west side. Immediately thereafter, I heard Stacy Harris say, we should look to or consider putting the multi-use path on the east side. That's all I said. I didn't say anything else other than that. Now, you can draw your own conclusions, as I can also. I just asked, does Stacy Harris deny this, that you made a recommendation? And thereafter, the vote was taken and it was voted to put the path on the east side. Okay, now, if you pay, my concern is if you pay the public work director to do a study, who's the expert? To make a recommendation, and in his words, an obvious recommendation to be on the west side and it's voted to be put on the east side and someone mentions it, that I heard and saw on the video, why would you, why would you vote to change it from the west side to the east side when it was obvious to the public's work director that it should be on the west side for all the, all the reasons I mentioned and so many other people have mentioned also? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle Rodell, am I close? Say it again. Rodler, okay, I missed the R.
Thank you guys for your time and opportunity to speak with you. I had probably emailed you guys. I'm with the Parent Safety Alliance. We're a group of parents in DeKalb County. We live, work and play throughout Dunwoody for all of our different activities as a family. And I had sent an introductory letter to you guys to basically just introduce, introducing what we're trying to do. We're trying to unite DeKalb County, the Board of Education, all of the different city governments and the DeKalb County Police and try to approach the state of Georgia and ask them to please allocate some of this $5 billion plus of surplus money that they have in undesignated funds to the school system, the police departments of all the different cities such as Dunwoody to, to not make the schools hard targets or whatever the, the description may be, but to make them harder for people to come onto the campus with external posted police visibility, make sure all the locks work, make sure all of the alarms work, make sure all the doors close the way they're supposed to. Just basic, small things that can be addressed that a lot of school systems either don't have the money for or don't have the manpower for. I also believe because the election is coming up, now is a really good time to ask for it. We have a lot of leverage and a lot of politicians want to get behind this. I've also spoken with all of the other cities in DeKalb County. Brookhaven and Shambly especially have been very supportive about this. And I know you guys are neighbors with them. If I could, I'm here to ask for y'all's endorsement and any help, feedback, advice, introductions to the right people, because I'm just a citizen of DeKalb and I work and, and play in Dunwoody a lot. So this city is very important to me and my family, and I just want to have you guys involved when I approach the government at, at the state level and ask them for their help. And as for, say, I have the city of Dunwoody behind us. The Parent Safety Alliance is a group of, of parents all throughout DeKalb County, so some of them do live in Dunwoody. And I would love for any help that you guys can offer, feedback, either replies to the emails, just any, any supportive things that you can do to help Parent Safety Alliance further our initiatives.
Thank you. It's not a two-way conversation.
Okay, we appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
City manager comments?
We have no need for an executive session tonight. It is now 7:09.
With that in mind, council comments. Go ahead, you have a few hours. Stacy, go ahead.
Just to further clarify what the Mr. Simon said, I don't know what you thought you heard or saw in the June 13th video, but when you recuse yourself, you actually have to leave the room. So during that discussion, I was not present here. I was actually in the side room trying to stay awake. So you couldn't have heard or seen me, or I don't, there's two other females up here. Perhaps you said that, but I when you recuse yourself from a discussion, you have to leave the room and that is what I did. I left the room.
Okay, Joe, anybody? John? Tom, go ahead. Okay, Joe, anybody? John, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, just like to point out to the community, people may not know, this Saturday, July 30th is World Against Trafficking Day awareness and obviously I'm speaking about human trafficking here. There will be a walk to, to raise awareness for this issue. It is going to be starting at All Saints Church at 9:00 AM at Kieran Hall, which is better known to some people as Scout Hut in the back of the church. It will walk down to Dunwoody Village and back. It's approximately a four-mile walk. There is registration, but you, you're not required to register in advance if anyone wants to participate in that. There are four cities where this is taking place in, in the country. I believe Dunwoody, of course, is one of them, Charlotte, I think Golden, Colorado and in Virginia, maybe Richmond, but I'm not 100% sure if that's the city or not. But we are one of four cities where this is taking place. So if, if anyone's interested, 9:00 AM at All Saints on Saturday.
Show up, right? Show up. All right, anybody else? So I believe that before we meet again, it will be the first day of school. As sad as that is, and a reminder that those first few weeks of school, yeah, I think our next meeting is on the first week of school. A reminder that our traffic gets much worse and harder the first few weeks of school and then it improves to whatever it's going to be, but just to practice patience and drive carefully. And August, we have lots of events coming up, so make sure you get your D News email letter, read your Dunwoody digest. And with that, shockingly, we can have a motion to adjourn at 7:11.
Move to adjourn?
Move by Tom.
Back in.
Second by Joe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously and good night. I want ice cream.